I can't, it's not turned on, so I can't. (laughing). Okay.
It was only my picture came.
Here it is. George. Maybe it's on.
Oh, here we go. Are you ready?
Sure.
Good evening, welcome to the New Market Planning Board meeting. It's Tuesday, July 13th, 2010. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's now 7:02, and I'll open the floor for public comments, those items that are not on the agenda. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment period. Next on the agenda is the review and approval of the meeting minutes of May 24th and June 8th. And I only have June 8th.
That's all I have.
Who sent you that? Neil. I mean, Stone had put together some notes from our brainstorming session that we had.
Oh, that was the May 28th meeting? Right.
Do you remember that?
That's exactly right.
He said some minutes, not minutes, but notes out from that meeting.
Right.
If you'd like me to resend them to everyone for the next meeting, I'd be happy to do that.
I think that would be good, unless we wanted to just, well, we haven't seen them, so it's hard to accept something we haven't seen. So why don't you do that? All right?
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Okay, great. Now, the minutes of June 8th, 2010 meeting. Are there any corrections, additions, deletions? Yes, Rick?
On the first page, line 31, we didn't approve the May 24th, 2010 minutes of that meeting.
That's right.
Okay.
And on page 14, page two, I'm sorry, page two, line 14, is that should be the fourth word from the end of she?
Probably should be he.
Should it be he?
I would guess that's a he, since...
Well, actually, it was me. I was waiting to hear back.
My comment is, I don't know who said it.
Okay.
The she is me.
Okay.
So that is correctly stated.
On page three, line 27 after LLC, the comma is misplaced.
Okay.
And I guess I got the same problem on page five, line 18, fifth word in says she, and the question is, who is she?
That's me.
Question is, how do you again?
Okay, then that's correct. Anything else? Any other comments? Changes, additions, deletions? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes of the June 8th, 2010 meeting as adjusted.
Second.
As amended.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstention.
Two abstentions. Val and Peter. Shame on you. Next on the agenda is a minor site plan review for the Penachuck Water Works. Lot is owned by the Shanda Farm Community Association. Location is between 50 and 54 Shanda Drive, tax map R7, lot 14, R1 zone. Proposal is for a 480 square foot expansion of the existing pump house for the Great Bay system, which serves the Shanda Farm community water supply. Expansion is required to meet New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services requirements for disinfection. And before we move on this, George, you want to make a comment? Because that's your development.
I live in the Shanda Farm Development, so I'm one of the butters. So I'll leave it up to the board whether I need to encourage myself on that. I don't know if there's issues with that. If you want me to, I will.
Well, I have no problem for you sitting in on this. Janice?
I don't have a problem.
Peter?
No problem.
Okay, then I'll stay.
Fine.
Unless the applicant has an issue.
No issues.
Sir, could you introduce yourself?
Absolutely. Good evening, my name is Steve Micho from Doucet Survey. This evening, I'm representing Penachuck Water Works. As you stated, the property is owned by the Shanda Farm Community Association. It's tax map R7, lot 14. The Penachuck Water Works maintains a pump station on the site. They have an easement to do so. They currently, is a letter of, a letter issued by DES that requires them to make some changes internally to the water system, and that requires that they expand the building. To do so, they need to increase the size by 480 square feet. There's an existing pump house on the site that will be expanded, 20 feet by 24 feet. It will be dressed up architecturally. The applicant has provided some sketches with the application that you can see. There is some minor site work that needs to take place. There's two underground storage tanks that are going to be installed, and that's for propane storage. The reason for that is that the applicant is going to also be installing a generator inside the building. And what this will allow is to run the pump when there is lack of power. And I think the residents in that subdivision, the Shanda Farm subdivision, certainly will appreciate being able to have water when in fact there is no power. Backup generators will handle that issue. The applicant met with the Conservation Commission last Thursday. I don't believe there's been a formal letter issued as of yet as to the results of that meeting, but certainly we're happy to discuss anything that took place at that meeting tonight. Tonight, I have with me John Boivier from Penachuck Water Works, and he can certainly answer any technical questions you might have about the application.
The propane tanks you're installing below ground, what's the size of those you propose to install?
Those are, there are two 1,000 gallon tanks to be installed.
1,000 gallon?
Correct.
So two times 1,000. And what's the capacity of the generator?
Perhaps John can answer that question for you? The size of the generator is a 55,000 KW generator.
55 K?
Yeah.
Great, thank you. At this point, we need to consider accepting the application, is that correct?
That is correct.
And would you give us an update on whether the application is complete?
Yes, the application is complete. As I went through it, I found that, actually, there's, everything was included that should have been included. So I would recommend that the board accept the application as submitted.
All right.
I would like to make a point of clarification in another aspect of the letter. In my letter, and in the research I did, it was noted in the minutes that originally the water system was to provide water service for just the condominiums, and the thought was that the single-family homes would have their own individual wells. And Mr. Willen has enlightened me that that's not the case, that actually the water system serves the condominiums up there as well as the single-family homes. And there's 38 condominiums there and 50 single-family homes. We just wanted to clarify that.
38 condos and 50 single homes.
That's correct.
But the application is essentially complete?
That is correct.
Is there a motion to accept the application?
I'm going to accept the application for, um... For the site plan review for Penachuck Water Works, at the location of 54, between 50 and 54 Shanda Drive on tax map R7, lot 14, R1 zone, for a 480 square foot expansion of the existing pump house for the water system.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of accepting this application, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Applications accepted. Now, Diane, you had some recommendations, but also there was, you indicated there was a meeting from the Conservation Commission?
Correct.
Correct. And Val, you're on the commission, are you, can you update us on that meeting and any results from the commission?
Yes, thank you. The Conservation Commission reviewed the plans on last Thursday. We did not have a quorum present at the meeting, but we did allow the applicant, Mr. Boivier, to present, and there were several questions that were posed and answered. So, and the plans had gone out along with the letter from Diane to the entire commission prior to that, so we also did have comments from other commission members that were presented. The commission had no issues with the proposal, which actually, as presented, was modified so that instead of any encroachment on the wetlands buffer area, the applicant was proposing to construct a retaining wall, which would eliminate a lot of the vegetative removal from that area as currently proposed on the plans, and would completely remove any impact on the wetlands buffer. The Conservation Commission wanted to ensure that the orange construction fencing would be up, so that there would be minimal damage to anyone going into the buffer area, or that that would be, you know, eliminated. The grubbing for the underground utility line to the building would be, the vegetative removal and area that was disturbed would be minimized, and that any fertilization would be kept to a minimum as proposed by the planner, using the low nitrogen type fertilizers, and that a conservation mix be utilized, as far as any replanting of the area. We asked very, a lot of questions relative to the propane tanks, the generator, the backwash overflow area, vegetation removal, the specific wetland topography of the lot, and we were satisfied with the point.
So there are no issues from the Conservation?
There's no issues that the commission is reporting.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Diane, did you have some comments on your recommendations that you have sent to us?
Well, I have a couple of questions. The first question is, the wetlands that have been identified in the vicinity of the expanded area where there's going to be the access drive going in and parking, are those considered poorly drained or very poorly drained soils? Are they hydric A or hydric B soils?
Those were identified by Mark West as hydric B soils.
Okay.
Very poorly drained with a 25-foot buffer.
Okay, very good, and I wanted to just clarify that. We did receive a revised existing conditions plan that has been stamped and signed by Mark West, so that satisfies the second concern that I had in my memo to the board. And the only thing that I would add at this point is that there be a note put on the plan that there'll be no disturbance, construction, filling, dredging, or removal of vegetation within the buffer area.
George? Val just mentioned that the design was modified for retaining walls so that wouldn't happen. Is that the design we're looking at, or?
It is not. I can expand upon that a little bit.
We don't have the design at this point, so I'm basing my comments on the previous supplemental.
Okay, so at some point, I'd like to have that explained, if you're not, whatever's a good stopping point.
However, if they mark the wetland area as Valerie suggested in her recommendations, then I think that would be sufficient for us to assure us that there's not going to be any disturbance in those areas.
The wetland buffer area.
The buffer area, which is 25 feet from the edge of the buffer.
Well, I was just being clear, not the wetland area, the buffer area.
In our definition, wetland area includes the buffer.
Okay, well, fine.
But yes, that's correct.
Peter?
You said very poorly drained, right?
Poorly, not very, correct.
Which is 25 feet.
And I'm happy to expand on those design changes. As submitted to the planning board, originally, there were two areas where there was going to be impact to the buffer. One of them was for some limited tree cutting in this area, and another for limited tree cutting and installation of an underground utility line to replace what is now an overhead service to the building. After discussions with the Conservation Commission last week, the applicant has decided to revise that proposal so that there will be installed a retaining wall, which will eliminate the need for some of this additional grading and the cutting of trees in that buffer. That will eliminate that disturbance. And we'll, instead of installing underground lines from this existing pole, we'll install a new pole, which is outside of the buffer, and from that new pole, run underground utilities to the building. So the result of those two minor modifications is zero wetlands buffer disturbance.
Just for clarification, because it will be on a condition of approval, I think, if we make that motion, that the retaining wall will be at the edge of the gravel driveway? Not as Mr. Lucio just, not as was just shown to the board here?
Yes, I think when we were talking at the Conservation meeting, it was going to be just on the outside of the fence right here.
Okay.
Just for clarification, because it will be on a condition of approval, I think, if we make that motion, that the retaining wall will be at the edge of the gravel driveway? Not as Mr. Lucio just, not as was just shown to the board here?
Yes, I think when we were talking at the Conservation meeting, it was going to be just on the outside of the fence right here.
Okay. What else, Diane?
For us, given the close proximity of a couple of the residents there, I wondered if there might be some adverse impacts, that the butters might have some concerns about, especially if there's going to be any lighting. And it was indicated to me that at this point, there's no plans to provide security lighting, however, and that still is the case, Mr. Boivier, I believe?
I'll clarify that.
Okay.
There won't be any permanent security lighting that will be on at all times, but there will be a light that meets your standard at the doorway, so when our crews, if they show up at night to work in the building, they'll be able to turn the light on and at least see the entranceway there. So it'll be an inside switch that will go on and off. So there won't be any, there's no security light in there now, so we really don't see the need that we have it there, unless somebody else feels differently.
Well, and I wondered if the building inspector, as part of his plan review, might require that, so I wanted to, at least if there is going to be any security lighting on the exterior of the building, that it be such that it's downward deflecting, and that it doesn't spill over on adjacent properties and meets our requirements.
Absolutely.
Before you go, the, the plan shows a security motion floodlight, so does that mean it's...
Right, well, the, you know, we're going to, we'll make that change because of, we're aware of the sensitivity to the light issues, so that we can make that change right to there, so there will be a light switch inside the building, that it won't be motion sensor that, every time the wind blows, it won't come on and go on and off, which is annoying.
Yeah, and people walk their dogs, animals walk by, it'd be going on and off.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that will be removed?
That, there will still be a light there, but the note to the motion sensor light will be taken off, and we'll work with the building department to make sure that we get the appropriate lighting under our electrician.
And the other concern is there's some, some of the tree-lined area that is going to be removed to provide for the new propane tank that's proposed in the plan?
Not for the propane tanks, that's all an open area right here. That's just going to be some grading, you know, we're going to dig those into the ground and fill over them. Really, right in this area here, if you look at the existing, where the building is coming to, that's about where the existing fence line is. So we are going to move a little bit further this way, and there's some trees that actually overhang the site, and there's a few, I would say probably like four, six-inch, eight-inch trees with branches hanging over that will actually be against the building. Those will end up coming down. And John, I'm sorry, I don't, one of the butters here lives over here. We can see, when the leaves are off these trees, we can clearly see that, you know, there'll be clear sight view right in between. So what I would suggest, because we're sensitive to, you know, losing all those trees in the summertime, is having something there, is that we would propose probably maybe some six-foot or eight-foot diameter, you know, spruce trees or something in that area. So at least in, during, after its construction, there'd be some kind of a buffer there for those folks, so they won't have to look down at the building. We can easily do that, you know, plant them maybe eight feet on center or something like that, where we're working.
All right, can we make that?
Is it just one butter that is impacted?
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the butters before we finalize.
But is that, is it just one butter, as far as the...
There's one here, and then across the driveway, there's another house, probably right off the map over here.
Any tree removal impact?
This would be, this gentleman here would be the only one with tree removal impact right here.
All right. Yes, sir, could you come up and identify yourself, and we're interested in your comments?
Yes, my name is John Hartshorn, I live at number 50 Shanda Drive, which is immediately the property, there's my property line there. I have no problems with this application at all, to have water in a power outage. We've had two four-day outages in the last two years. It's been pretty nice. So as far as the trees, I have no problem with that. In the summer, I can't see down there anyway. In the winter, not really out in the back garden, to be perfectly honest.
Okay.
I have no problems.
Great, thank you very much.
The security light was, that was an interesting point, if it's on the switch, great.
Great, okay, thank you. Looking out, but any other comments from anyone? Okay. All right, so we have some, some conditions?
We have some conditions. Maybe we could go through and reconstruct them, make sure we, okay.
Can I, before we get into the conditions, can I ask a few other questions?
Certainly.
Can I, I want to clarify a few other things. So, top right, there's a stone fill infiltration, what's that for? That for the...
What it does, the iron and manganese filters in there will have backwash, probably about 150 gallons per, you know, maybe every day to, you know, day and a half or so, and that will be just a groundwater, ground discharge of that backwash water there, which is very typical for these installations. That discharge will have to have a, it would be registered with the DES and approved by the DES.
Because that also entails a little bit of clearing, I was wondering if it could be shifted somehow, so you wouldn't have to clear that side? Is there a rational location?
Well, the only way, it has to be down gradient for us, because we need to get it out of the, out of the building. And the other thing is, is if we start to move closer to the road, we start to impact the road over here, we could tighten it up a little bit more, and that would, that would minimize a little bit. But most of this work, this, you know, if we're looking at it, there's a couple trees in there, but it's a higher canopy tree, so if we can get in and work around in there, we might be able to do it with not clearing as much, but we do have to put it somewhere down gradient, so that we end up in a little flaw.
Well, this gentleman doesn't have a problem, so if you, if we put those trees in, it should be all right.
Yeah.
The other question I have is where you putting the gas tanks in? That's obviously a fill area, and based on your cross-section, I know that cross-section's exaggerated, but does that need a retaining wall? I mean, there is a retaining wall coming off the existing shed right now.
Right.
And that's almost the same grade, so I'm wondering if a retaining wall's needed there.
We're showing it as two to one. I mean, we could continue a short, you know, off over here. The only question I have is just from, is just, we'll have to work with access to the gas company when they supply gas, stepping up over something. That's something we'd have to work out there.
Well, they'd have to step over that anyway, I mean, that's...
No, they wouldn't have to step over it, they'd just walk up the slope.
Well, all right, again, it's exaggerated.
Yeah, because it's, because the slope's here. This is not a fence or anything here. So it's just, it's a two-to-one slope that we show going right up to, over the tanks. And, you know, if it's, if it's appropriate, we may be able to dig these a little bit further and soften this grade up a little bit more, too, because you have to have a certain amount of cover over the top.
Are they going to seed that, stone it?
It's going to be seeded.
Okay, somebody, I don't know, this looks deep to me, you know. Again, looking at the, looking at the retaining wall coming off the shed, it's almost the same grade.
That's not a driveway going in there where cars or vehicles could go in.
That's actually the road.
They just park on the outside, and mostly it's walk-in there.
You don't need any protection.
Yeah, we never, we don't really drive in.
What are you, the, there is an access road there for the fire pond.
Right, right down here, there's an existing road here.
That's an access road that goes down to a fire pond.
There's a little gravel pulling area here. You could pull in and back a vehicle in there if you had to, but it's typically not used.
You have, you have pumps and that sort of thing, how do you get the heavy equipment in and out?
Well, that's, that's exactly what I'm saying, you pull in and you back the, back the vehicles right up to the door.
That's not going to, the gas tanks won't cause a problem.
Not going to impact that at all, though, that's outside of that area.
I'm just looking for stability, that's all.
Yeah.
I guess I'll, to you guys and the engineers, but just questioned that. The other question I have is, actually, another neighbor asked a question about chemical storage. It's all in the building?
All in the building.
So it's concrete floor, so there's any...
Yeah, concrete floor containment.
If there's a spill, it's not a problem?
No, it's all contained.
What chemicals we have in there?
Sodium hypochlorite, yeah, is the primary chemical there. There may be an orthophosphate, which we use for corrosion control, lead and copper, so it softens up the water, so it's not eroding your pipes. And that's, foreseeably, that's, you know, what we would have there.
And then you have the lubricant issue, the items with the generator?
Right, yeah, oil, yeah, just regular lubricated oils, and that's, in this hall, this half of the building's all contained as a separate generator room. So any kind of oils or whatever, or coolant, if the generator were to blow a hose or something like that, that would all be staying right on that floor.
And using propane, so that's not a problem.
Yeah, and the propane, the gas is not going to be the issue.
And one last question, I'm just curious, do you need an ad permit for the generator?
Not right now.
When you say not right now, what is that?
They may change that rule, it's been talked about that for a long time. It's based on different, you know, sizes of generators and the frequency of use, and there's, you know, if we were in our state to the south, we would.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. How often will you fire the generator?
It gets operated about once every week under non-load conditions, just to exercise it. It'll run automatically, and we usually set it to run on a weekday in the middle part of the morning. And then usually, it'll run under load with operator supervision one time a month.
And how, how long is that?
Generally about a half an hour, 20 minutes to a half an hour.
That's all the questions I have.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Val has one.
Can we just clarify the number of proposed trees, the evergreens, that you're planting to?
What I would say is if this is about a 24-foot expansion here, 24, we would probably plant one probably every eight feet, 10 feet on center. So we're looking at maybe one, two, three, and possibly a fourth one over here where we're disturbing.
Okay. Any other questions? We got a summary of the conditions?
Okay, let me just go look at mine. All right, number one, that the plan be modified so as to not encroach on the 25-foot wetland buffer to eliminate any potential impacts on wetlands. That was based on Valerie's recommendation, that the area that's proposed for grubbing for the underground utilities, that that area also be minimized, so that it won't be disturbed.
It will be minimally disturbed.
Well, I don't think you need that any longer, if I understood what you're planning on doing.
I refer to the area near the existing pole, yeah, that...
That will be disturbed.
That will not be disturbed, because we will be replacing that underground line with an existing pole on, on the line, on the existing overhead line, and running underground from that new pole to the building. So that would eliminate that second area of disturbance altogether.
And where they want to grub is already cleared? I mean, you have to dig it up, but it's just grassy area, right?
For the, for the new underground line? Yeah, and that's outside of the wetland buffer, so.
Okay.
And that, number three, that fertilizer be used sparingly, and that they use low phosphates, low-release nitrogen fertilizer, or limestone, and that they use a conservation mix for grass, for stabilizing the areas disturbed. Four, that the retaining wall be located at the edge of the gravelled area. Fifth, that the security lighting be changed to a light switch activation system as opposed to a motion detective, detection system. to a motion detective, detection system, and that the notation be changed on the plan. Where am I, five? That there be minimal trees removed, and in the area of disturbance along the north, northwest, and north side of the building, that between three or four spruce trees be planted eight foot on center, and do we want to stipulate the height?
What kind of trees?
Evergreen.
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 Yeah.
Okay, I thought you said Colorado spruce when we talked.
Spruce was a suggestion.
Okay, doesn't matter what kind.
I thought it was fruit.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. They're conifers. But the idea is that they would be good-sized, six-foot trees, and they'd be planted eight foot on center, and that would result in three or four trees, based on the area that's needed to provide the screening. I guess there's nothing needed for chemical storage, nothing needed for ear permits. Were all of your concerns against it?
There's the retaining wall, but I think they just need to figure that out. The retaining wall, if they need one, but I'll let them figure that out.
Okay.
And the construction fence?
And the construction fence to define where the wetlands are, and the wetland buffers. And if there is going to be any lighting in the future, it'd be in compliance with our Anything else?
We covered everything we talked about.
So will they submit a new plan showing the...
Yes.
...report signed?
And the chairman and I will go over each of the conditions and make sure they've been met to the satisfaction of the planning board.
Do I hear a motion? Anyone want to venture a motion?
I'll, I'll...
Approve the application with these conditions? Val, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the application by Pencheck Water Works on the property located between 50 and 54 Shandor Drive, a tax map R7 lot 14R1 zone, for the proposal to construct a 480-foot, 480-square-foot expansion of the existing pump house for the Great Bay system, Shandor Fire Community Water Supply, with the conditions as, as previously stated by the town planner Diane Hardy.
It's been moved and seconded? Any further discussion? George, anything else? You're good? Anybody else? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is any new business from anyone? Okay, any old business? Diane, one thing that I, as we discussed earlier, an update to keep things in perspective and in front of everyone, an update from Mr. Chinberg on the mills?
Yes. Since our last meeting, we have executed the developer agreement with Mr. Chinberg, which lay, outlines the planning board's conditions and the town's expectations during construction. Part of the development agreement involves his posting a bond in the amount of $240,000 to assure completion of the off-site improvements, including the parking lot, which is proposed in back of the library. We've heard also from Mr. Chinberg today that he has received a letter of commitment from his local bank, which is the first step for, towards his financing. Now he needs to go forward and, with some brokers, to line up the tax credit package, because he's receiving tax credits through the New Hampshire Business Finance Authority, and he's hoping that that will be wrapped up by September 1st, so that he can start construction. Right now he has 60% of the financing in his letter of commitment, and he needs the addition for the tax credits. But things are, are moving forward. He's completed all the off-site improvements within the public right-of-way, is, was approved by the planning board, and so that the town was able to pave the area at the beginning of June. And we have also worked with him on the redesign of the ADA ramp that's in front of the Riverdale property, and he's come up with a new design, which would show a ramp that meets the grade requirements. We sent that up to the State Commission for, on disability, for review. They've approved it, as has the Department of Transportation. So he's moving forward with the project at this point, and will be completing some of the improvements in the vicinity of the New England footwear property, the ADA ramps and so forth, in compliance with the previous conditions of the planning board when he came to us in June, January, excuse me. So things are moving forward, and it's exciting.
Is he on track to put in the underground utilities such that he can take out the poles?
Yes, yes, and he, he's agreed to have those be removed by September 16th, was the date that we had provided him. Yeah, and he's on board with that, so that's not a problem.
Well, he's done everything he said he was going to do, so...
He did, yes.
How's the, how's the progress with Rivermore?
He has reached an agreement with Rivermore, and he's waiting for his permit for the Rivermore wetlands impact permit. That's at the state right now, he was, that was part of his negotiations with them, to get them to sign that. And his attorney is, or their attorney, I should say, is drafting the easement language, and I've asked him to get that to us at least a month, month and a half before the deadline, so that we'll have plenty of time to have our legal people review that. So that has moved forward, and seems to be looking good.
He's doing some other work over there, I'm not sure what it is, in addition to where the footwear company is. He's, I walk through there occasionally, and he seems to be doing some, some work in the back, I'm not sure what that is, but I think he's charging forward, so that's good.
That is good.
Okay, and North Main Street, any update on that?
I have not heard from Mr. Landry. I did email him today in hopes that I'd get some kind of report for tonight's meeting, but I didn't hear back from him this afternoon, so I'll keep you posted on that.
Okay. Any other older new business from anyone?
Just want to thank Diane for putting that grant application in.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, as my friend, Amanda Stone called me a week before, and she encouraged me to get the application in. She said that as of that point, they hadn't awarded all the grants that they had anticipated. So we were encouraged to move forward with that, and I was able to get it in, and what we're going to be doing is applying for $8,500, and they will provide a technical assistance provider to work with us on the stormwater regulations. And I did hear back from the director of the program, and she said that it looked good, and that they would be formalizing it with a letter, and we should be expecting something soon. I saw that, looks very good. And I did provide a copy to all the board members, so that you can review that, and...
And what is the status of the, we were talking about a consultant for the impact fees?
I haven't...
Review that?
I have not gotten, together with Edwin Oskay, to discuss how we're going to finance that. It's still on my list of things to do.
And the shore land ordinance?
Oh, yes, thanks, Val. The shore land ordinance and the floodplain ordinance is scheduled for the Town Council Workshop on July 21st, and we put the ordinance paperwork together, and if you, any of the board members would like to join me for that meeting, I've asked Cynthia Copeland to join us, and Val, since she was instrumental in getting that project started. Does anyone else would like to join us for the workshop that's going to be here in the Town Council chambers at 7:00? I think we're first on the agenda.
And then they would be able to actually take up, or vote on the matter at the August meeting?
Yeah, what they usually do is, you know, they'll introduce it at a workshop, and there's an opportunity to make a presentation and have some discussion back and forth, and then they package it for first reading, and that would be proposed at their business meeting in August. And they could also schedule the public hearing for that meeting as well. And then at the second meeting, they could be in a position to adopt it, so I believe their second meeting would be the third Wednesday in August, so that by the end of the summer, we will have, hopefully those two pieces will be adopted.
Terrific. Terrific. Anything else? Janice?
Well, he's giving you a cue, Janice, you missed it.
Oh, I thought he wanted me to ask about flash. I'm getting old. Motion to adjourn?
I have, just one other thing, the, the folks from Hickory Pond Partners, they met the July 9th deadline for meeting all of their conditions, and they posted a bond through construction, and have paid all their escrow, and have signed a developers agreement. And so that project, John just signed the plans, and so that's in a position where they can go forward at this point. And we're going to be working with Tobin Fowell, who's going to be doing the construction engineering.
Terrific.
That's all I have.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.
Yeah, there you go.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.